Okay, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. Please raise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to and flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Jamie Bailey, board member.
Bernadette Bauer, board member.
Brian Cristelli, board member, prison estimate superintendent.
A.D. Walker, staffer.
Lisa Arnold, staff.
Bill Oplinger, staffer.
Carolyn Curl, staff.
Sunshine Perry, staff.
Linda Melvin, staff.
Michael Smith, guest.
Chris Smith, staff.
Okay, approval of the board meeting minutes for December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll move for the approval of board meeting minutes for December fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Second thought. It's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Which carries? Consent agenda.
I'll move for the approval consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Then motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed?
I would like to make a motion that we move new business number eight, approval of Elma baseball boosters fundraisers before discussion items so that Kelly can attend the basketball game this evening.
I'll second that. Been a motion made and seconded. Chris, do we have to number that?
Yeah, we want to make that the new item. Item six.
That's letter A. And then A. And everything goes to B. Everything moves down just in that section. Okay, I'm sorry, I'll back up. So there's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we will do the approval of the Elma basketball boosters fundraiser.
Kelly, you're us?
Yeah. Thanks, Ellen.
Um, yeah, I can't. I just was waiting. I didn't know if it was my turn exactly, so. And we submitted for Elma baseball booster fundraisers and to do a raffle ticket sales for a smoker or grill of some sort and for the season to and do, I guess my question is, do you want me to just list them out or I haven't done this before?
Yeah, just explain what they are real quick, Kelly. Thank you.
All right. Yep, thank you. And so we are proposing to do raffle for a smoker or grill. And as a fundraiser for the season, we would like to resubmit sponsor signs for the outfield fence, which is a renewal fee of two hundred to local businesses and for a new sign is five hundred. And they're a vinyl rollable sign, which is a bit easier to preserve year to year and it's easily put up and taken down. And there is a skills camp proposal to provide a Saturday, which was to be determined for a date to invite little leaguers out for a mini skills camp. And then to also do a spiritware order fundraiser through BSN. And then our final thing would be to operate a concession stand during home games.
And Kelly, the only thing that I would say about the skills youth camp, just want to make sure that all the insurances and medical release forms were in to have a little coverage for you guys.
Okay, and I will follow up with that.
Thank you.
And make sure that gets, happens and gets to you guys in a timely manner.
All right, well, I don't know that it needs to get to us, but just to make sure.
That we have them in person. Okay.
Yep, yep.
The only other thing, Kelly, would be the concessions, making sure you have your permits from the county.
Food handles. Okay, county permits and food handlers. We got it.
Okay.
I'll move for the approval of the Elma baseball boosters fundraisers as listed.
I'll second that.
It's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Which carries? Thank you so much for your time tonight, Kelly. We tried to get you out of there quickly. Go Eagles.
Cheer loud for us, yeah.
Awesome. I sure will. Thank you all.
Have a good night.
Likewise.
Okay, um, next is the Elma High School Focus on Kids, Mr. Oplinger.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. We call this the state of the state. It's compared to your data. It also hasn't been our goals for this year and probably our goals for the next couple of years. And so there we go. Oops, which place? Okay. So one of our goals is increased daily attendance. We're pouring tons of energy into the freshmen this year. We're really focusing on the freshmen, meeting with them often, meeting with parents, really getting them to get a feel of what it's like to be a high school student. It's a lot different when you go from eighth to ninth grade, so we're trying to move that transition for them. And so first of all, this slide is our overall attendance right now in twenty-two, twenty-three. You can see in the orange that there's twenty-two, twenty-two-two data, and then you can see our data in green. We did, we peaked a little in November because we had a lot of kids out that were sick. We had a ton of that going on. In December, we're kind of at the same spot, but now we are starting to drop down, which means we have less absences than we had this time last year. So that's a positive for us right now. So that's our current daily attendance. And it's not many time to ask questions. It's never a problem. So this is our ninth grade curve right here. We started out a little high and then this is about the time in October, we had some sickness, a little bit in November. This is also the time that Sunshine really started to call ninth grade parents, call kids, and just bird dogging them along the way, giving them support. So we see now that our current ninth graders, our absent count on the left is actually going down, which is good. That's a really good thing for us. And this is our tenth graders right now. You can see again in December, this is about twenty kids difference. We're a little bit higher there. And so we are not sure that we're on a downward trend right now, which is good. And so we're gonna have to keep continuing to watch this with them quite a bit. This is our eleventh graders. We're about at the same spot we were in December, although we did see a decrease between November and December. And again, our absence count is down, which means more kids are coming to school, which is the most important thing. If somebody said, what is the most important data ever in schools? It's attendance, because everything else, everything else goes around that, everything else. If kids aren't in school, they're not online, they're not doing their thing, that's a problem. So it's the most important for us. This is our current twelfth graders. There again, December, I think that's a twenty kid difference. We dropped about, excuse me, about three kids. Twenty, I think it's twenty absences, twenty periods absent, so it's very close again. And we're starting to see a decreased trend again as we go. We don't have January's data yet until the end of the month. But again, we're trending down, which is really good for us. We're pushing attendance hard. And attendance is kind of, um, there's so many variables with attendance, because some kids don't feel connected to school. Some kids don't feel that what's being taught is relevant. And so we're really, really working on that right now. And our overall unexcused absences has decreased quite a bit from the beginning of the school year. Again, we're talking to parents, talking to kids, calling parents in, having a meeting, working with kids to be successful in school, what it means to the high school person. So we're very happy about this right now. That's where we're trending. And then the other goal we have, number two, is an increase in credits earned and different ways kids can earn credits. Chris knows this, and I'm sure you do too. Kids can basically go anywhere to go to school anywhere they want to. It is wide open. It's growing exponentially across the nation. Kids can go cafe style, pick a class here and take it at a different school, take it in a different way. It's changed dramatically and it's growing very, very fast in the United States, especially with COVID. You can see in, on the far left, that is our twenty-twenty-two data. Our middle is twenty, oh, excuse me, our twenty-twenty-two data is last year's data. Rates of F's. We're super happy about this because our F list has gone down again here. And we're starting, this is the end of the year and this is where we're at right now. So our F lists are decreasing, which is really great. Huge applaud to the teachers last year that were doing mastery-based learning where kids could use whatever they needed to do to reach standard and take the competencies in different ways multiple times. So we're seeing our F list decrease, which is great, fantastic. And this is really good data for us, because you can see in twenty-twenty-two, our F list was in ninth grade is two thirty-seven, then one ninety-one, one sixty-five, and forty-one. So it has dramatically decreased, which is fantastic. Super happy about this and where we're going. And this is the rate of grades by school year. Again, on the far right for twenty-twenty-three, that is still work in progress, but the other two are finished. We're seeing an increase in A grades. We're seeing a mild increase in Bs, our Cs, and again, our F lists are decreasing, which is what we're really aiming for, is to get those kids through school. Sometimes, I don't mean quite afraid, a D is a really good thing for a kid. It really is. I know that sounds terrible when you're talking about academic excellence, but kids that get Ds don't have to repeat classes, get caught in that trap, and they're just in remediation constantly. We're really happy with this data right now. In two years, we're about half of what we were in twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-three, we're about half there. So super happy about some of this data we've collected. And then we want to increase student engagement. That's another goal of ours, get kids connected to school. And again, we're at this point where we think of, well, we went to school, a school spirit, loved our school and all this. Kids are here a lot, a lot of times now just to take a class. They're just here to take classes. They can take them here. They can take them through ASU. They can take them through Gray's Harbor. They can take them online. And so we're trying to keep kids engaged. And we're trying to do that by offering them, instead of them shopping elsewhere for individualized opportunities, we're trying to have them here. So as you well know, we have college and a high school right now. You can see the numbers are, English is at twenty-one and our pre-calc is at forty-three and thirteen right now. So our Arizona State University students are increasing. We're continually pushing kids to take that instead of leading us to go to Running Star. We're trying to capture those kids back. We're not trying to take away from college and high school, but we want to keep our kids here engaged at our school instead of going to Running Star, because we'd offer a fantastic product, equal to or better than with a nationally recognized university. So we're really trying to keep those kids and capture them. So I think we have about about sixty-two to sixty-five kids that are currently going to Running Star. And I think we're the highest in Gray's Harbor County percentage-wise, aren't we? I think hands down we are. So we're trying to reengage those kids at school and get them back on campus and be, you know, productive Eagles is what really we're at. We have a edgenuity, which is our credit retrieval system. Sometimes students can also just take that in lieu of a class, and that's an online, that used to be Odyssey where the Miskowski has. And so we have students in that as well. So we are trying to increase individualized opportunities for kids to compete with what the kids have out there and what they can take, they can shop for now. Here's some extracurricular activities. You've got everything from choir, FFA, Skills USA, multimedia athletics. So we do offer a ton of different extracurricular activities for our kiddos, so. Our participation is still down in those, and so we're really trying hard to push those. And having club days, I think, was it once a month? We're closing once a month, so without core, we don't do this often. So we're increasing student support. We have academic support during the day. Our students can go at seven fifteen in the morning and have a teacher present to help them. They can also go after school Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday and have some to be there to help them with math or English. That's pretty the two predominant ones that we have. I'm going to advertise here, and I talked to our building leadership team today. We're gonna have beyond the bell where students can actually come in after school and meet with a teacher who's ELA or math. They'll be able to stay there for an hour as teacher taught. They can catch up, get assistance, and then we're gonna run an actual bus schedule for them, a light bus schedule, not like we would use if we had a, some type of a delay. So really, we're really happy about this, so we can offer more opportunities for our kiddos. One thing we're trying to work on, and I know probably every other school in maybe the world, is trying to decrease cellphone use. There's, there's no evidence that shows that cell phones don't distract us as humans, none, there's zero. There's evidence out there that says that students in education actually need an electronic device in school. We have that. We have Chromebooks for all of our kids, so they don't need cell phones. We're all addicts to cell phones if we have. It's just the way it is. Every time that thing beeps, we get a, we get a dopamine rush. We're like, who's texting me? You know, it's there. So we're really trying to work with kiddos to store their phones, kind of get back into learning. And one way we're doing that is every teacher's been provided a cellphone caddy. They don't have to use that, but it's trying to be our norm where they walk in, store their phone, get it out of their mind instead of waiting for that next buzz to happen in their pocket or their backpack. So we're really trying to work with that.
What percentage, excuse me, what percentage or how, is it widely being used or is it catching on?
We just started getting, we just got those caddies.
Okay.
And the requirement for teachers is they can either use a caddy or their second semester syllabus has to detail what their procedure is for stowing phones away and out of sight, completely out of sight. We really just gotta get back in the, and I know this is a national problem. It is, but we're really gonna retrain our kids. It was, last was horrible. There was kids on phones all the time, so we're slowly decreasing that. It's becoming part of our norm. We're gonna ramp it up next. We've already told kids if you're not gonna take measures to be responsible, we're not going to have cell phones allowed during the school day. That's lunch and passing time, which past practice, we know our school did that. So we're really trying to give it to them and show some responsibility with that before we go to the next step. It's important. And you know, we, we're real flexible as staff and teachers. If a kid comes up and says, my grandfather's in the hospital right now. If I get a text, I'm gonna need to step out and, you know, that type of emergency, or they need to use, we're totally flexible. Big time. Oh. Babing is another huge issue we have. It's a terrible, terrible problem right now. Across the nation, it's a terrible problem. On tapping mosling bathrooms predominantly, they do make detectors that we've looked at, but we've also done some Googling on how to capacity detectors, and it's very simple to do that. So we really have to take over our bathrooms again, and I don't know how we're gonna do it, but it's something we have to do. It's a huge, huge problem. There was a recent study, I think it's next, that in twenty-eighteen, nine hundred schools were surveyed in Washington State. Twenty-one percent of all tenth graders that have tried vaping are on nicotine delivery devices. And this is a Washington youth, healthy youth survey. It's a huge problem. And it's, quite honestly, it's it's a planned problem. Tobacco companies are buying this. It's, research shows that if you start vaping, after a while you don't get enough nicotine and you'll move to smoking. It's a planned thing for them. And it is rampant across the United States. It's a terrible problem. Very, very bad problem. So any questions on anything? They don't look kind of fast. I know it's twenty minutes max. I don't want to go again. Any questions, comments, or anything else? So, I think we're about wrapped up. This is still some work we have to do. We did a recent survey with our kiddos. There's a couple of things that really stand out that we need to get better at. This one here, sense of belonging, how much students feel they're valued members of the school community? And we are in the zero to nineteenth percentile of that. It's not so at the elementary school at all. But somewhere along the line, kiddos feel like they don't belong in high school. That's a huge big deal. We're working with our building leadership team to do easy things to check on kids that don't take a lot of time and have a lot of meaning to kids. So that's a big problem for us. And then also valuing school, how much students feel that school is interesting, important, useful. Again, if it's not relevant to kids and their lives and who they are, they're gonna find some other place to go. They really just aren't, because they can now. So these are really big things we need to tackle this year and going into next year. We just have to keep ramping it up. Because quite frankly, this is just absolutely unacceptable. We have to be, do much better at it. We really, really do. We need kids to know that people care about them, they have value at school, and they feel like they're somebody in our school. So we're really, a lot of work to do with this. But we're work in progress. We're all trying real hard to do that. Any questions? If you do, please ask me. I'm open to tell you whatever you.
I think because at least two of us have children in your building, I could share many of your sentiments without throwing our kids under the bus, but you know, I can definitely say that those are not things that we're not hearing or not happening.
Right.
Right? And so I appreciate the honesty and the, you know, it's what the data says. You can't really deny it.
No, I'm not.
Those are big problems to tackle. Like you said, they're really societal problems.
Right.
But we, we have the window that you have access to, so.
Yeah.
Like it's for taking on the efforts.
We, we have to, yeah. And you can't blame kids for not having school spirit or standing up during the fight, so they don't even feel like they're right.
Right.
I can blame them. So we have a lot of work to do with them. And we're gonna, we're gonna tackle it, so. Anything else?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Will. I think a lot of this work is echoing a lot of the work we're trying to do as a district. We're trying to restructure all of our standards and embedding in a way where students find value. A lot of our redefining work and our reincorporating this work is, do our students have a place that they feel like they're welcome? What is our student involvement? And really, I think a total decimation of a lot of our student activities and clubs and sports performing arts programs after two years sitting at home. So now this ability to really pull our students back in and make sure every student in the Elma School District will have a place. So that's our ultimate goal, is one hundred percent of the students in the Elma School District and our school district, one hundred percent of students in our district are gonna have a place to call home. And that's a lofty mission, but we know it has to happen.
Okay, communications and comments. Do you have anybody from ETO? EESP? E-Copa? Fabian? Didn't see any public comments registered with you. Okay, so to unfinished business. We're going to go ahead and do a roll call vote to approve the district one board candidate.
Bernadette Bauer.
Michael Smith.
Jamie Bailey.
Michael Smith.
Stephanie Smith.
Michael Smith.
Brian Cristelli.
Michael Smith.
Come on.
I think we have to yes, wearing in.
I do. Oh. I swear I got it. This is a super sticky, sticky note. Just want you to know.
We agreed Ryan was gonna do the, uh, the Price is Right, come on down.
Yeah, go ahead.
When you say we.
I think we were trying to get your best Bob Barker era.
I already have my role in the board.
Oh, you know your role. Michael, would you please come up? And raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Michael B. Smith.
I, Michael B. Smith.
Do hereby solemnly swear or affirm.
Do by solemnly swear or affirm.
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of Director of Elma School District Number Sixty-Eight.
Of Director of Elma School District Number Sixty-Eight.
Position one.
Position one.
Gray's Harbor County.
Gray's Harbor County.
State of Washington.
State of Washington.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my abilities.
Morning. Congratulations.
Congratulations. For the record, I would like it noted that Michael and I are not related, other we do both have really cool last names.
This one and.
Let me, I saw.
Both of the ones on the left.
Yes.
So this one.
Yes, yes. Okay. That's good getting that done. Okay, approval of policy twenty-twenty.
We're just, we're seeking a follow-up on the last board policy on our, this is our second reading. Board policy twenty-twenty, we're seeking a follow-up on the second reading. And this is in alignment to the instructional materials adoption process in line with the master-based learning initiative.
I move for the approval of board policy twenty-twenty, second reading.
I'll second. There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I will add, this doesn't change your, or does not change your motion, but also it is a board goal of the reconfiguring of the instructional materials adoption process. So this is also one of the board goals, and with the adoption, this policy will allow us to be able to move forward on the instructional materials adoption process.
Excuse me a second. Okay, thank you.
So there was a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries. Approval of the MOU between. Did we do another? Oh, no. Okay, so, oh, sorry. I bounced from the baseball thing. Sorry about that. Approval of the MOU between Ajax and the ESD Number Sixty-Eight for the Automation Technician Apprenticeship. Ms. Christian.
Yes, we're asking, seeking an MOU with Ajax, and what this is, is this MOU would have it where Elma is the school district within a thirty-five mile radius to provide the apprenticeship for automation technician. And so this allows us to continue to work with like Sierra Pacific and other industries that are outside of our school district, but well within reach of our students and also our program. And it also secures that we, we have already developed the program for this area. And we're just having an MOU to keep it so that it stays with Elma. And Ajax is, has been very open in the dialogue and understands. And that's why we put the thirty-five mile radius, because we also don't want our students traveling that much further than that anyway.
I move for the approval of MOU between Ajax and the ESD Number Sixty-Eight for the Automation Technician Apprenticeship.
I'll second it.
Been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the MOU between WSU School of Medicine and the Elma School District for the Health Sciences STEM Mentorship Program.
This is an MOU with WSU and Elma School District again to provide mentorship. We are currently working with them where they come onto our campus. Three times this year, we have, we actually have a second year medical student that works directly with our program and serves as a mentor. And then we'll also be good them going to their campus. And so this is a group of our students that we use in our allied health curriculum that we just developed this year in the process of developing. So this MOU is just saying that we are working with WSU and that they're, they also have the ability to collect some data in research, because one of the things that they want to do is follow these kids to see if it's making a difference for them to get connected into medical careers.
I think you should let the cougar on the end probably. It's not a WSU Christmas here.
There it is.
You should get to make that motion.
See, I, I moved to approve the MOU between WSU School of Medicine and the Elma School District for the Health Sciences and STEM Mentorship Program.
I'll second it. There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? On paper?
I.
Motion carries.
Chairperson, I'd like to make a special note on both of those between the Ajax apprenticeship and the WSU College of Ed. This first house work on actually bringing in that dual pregnant alignment. On that pathway alignment and kind of that kind of carrying through the district wide vision on our career and college readiness vision and how. Both of these M O Us and these contracts have really solidified these out community partnerships as we're continuing forward for this current college readiness partnership.
Thank you. Um, okay, approval to the, to attend launch. Um, it just says launch.
It's called launch.
I know, but I think we're gonna have to have some explanation there. It's just so funny to say that. To attend launch New Orleans, January thirty first. Uh, through February third of twenty twenty three. Um, it would be for Superintendent Nesmith, Board Chairperson Bernadette Bauer, and C T Director Kristy Kershaw.
This is that the launch initiative is a project funded by Jobs for the Future, Advanced C T E, Advanced Ed, and Invest Ed. Um, I think those are all the programs. Uh, Jobs for the Future is actually an offshoot designed by the Harvard College, the Harvard College of Education. Um, and Jobs for the Future is who initially published a book called Pathway or Report Called Pathways to Prosperity in two thousand and eleven. Pathways to Prosperity Report was this call for the need to re-restructure, rebuild the education system. On on how the United States is not meeting our need or economic need and our post-secondary completion needs. Launch as a part of this joint venture is the top twelve school districts in the United States who have come up with creative solutions to begin responding to this great need identified in two thousand and eleven. And Elma School District was selected by Jobs for the Future and nominated by Washington State. As one of the top school districts in the nation as far as rural school districts, building apprenticeship based apprenticeship and uh career pathways. Um, and really being a model for the rest of the United States, because because of being a rural district. These programs we run are generally programs you would only see in large urban districts. And that's to the credit of uh our C T Director, Ms. Kershaw on Chris, on Kristy Kershaw building these programs. So really, in in Elma, we have programs that you would not see in a world district without the the work of our C T Department, our teachers. So we're, this is fully funded. It comes with um a ten thousand dollar grant to off cover the cost of our airfare. And our travel. And it's also, launch is actually going to be going back in and they will pay this in addition to covering our hotels. Our hotel stays. The district will be receiving a ten thousand dollar grant. And our hotels are the, our hotel accommodations will be paying for it by launch. They're asking for the superintendent. A board chair, the board chairperson and the C T Director on this nationwide work on. What does a new plan for the American education system look like?
I move for the approval to uh Superintendent Nesmith, Board Chair Bernadette Bauer, and C T Director Kristy Kershaw to attend launch. In New Orleans, January thirty first through February third of twenty twenty three.
I'll second that. There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any just further discussion, any discussion?
Really amazing opportunity.
Can I add one thing to Mr. Nesmith? That will also follow up with a fall conference too with this program. So it's not just New Orleans.
We will have a second approval for Indianapolis in October. So it's a two-part kind of training study. I guess we're also being studied.
So awesome. Okay, so there's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in paper?
I.
I'm sorry for that.
That's okay. Motion carries. Uh, approval to attend redefining Ready Spring Conference Cedar Rapids, Iowa, April twenty second through the twenty fifth. Of this year would be Superintendent Nesmith and High School Principal, Mr. Bill Appler.
Um, we have membership, so kind of both both approvals will probably take in one go. Uh, Learning Twenty Twenty Five was an invitation organization through the National Superintendents Association on building a platform and what the new education system. What, how the the, how the National Superintendent's Education is gonna be writing report for the U S Department of Education. Um, within that, that membership was included with uh school district leaders as part of different organizations. So. The National Student Association has superintendents who are really early learning. Or um computer, you know, you know, modernization of technology. Our membership is through redefining ready. Um, our membership in Learning Twenty Twenty Five includes uh free participation with Henry find it ready. It comes as a program package. Um, I want to add though, as of December, the the current co-lead, co-lead of redefining ready. Was promoted to be becoming the Nash, the Executive Director of the National Superintendent's Association, which left a vacancy. For the leadership of redefining ready. And the Elma School District was asked to step in as the new code lead for redefining ready. So Elma School District was asked to kind of lead the program of study, innovation, and implementation of career and college readiness. For the rest of the superintendents across the nation as a member of A A S A. So we are now, it's a co-leadership position. The other school district is um Kim Cantu out of uh. Mansfield, Texas, which is a suburban school district just south. Like directly south between the intersection of Fort Worth and Dallas. Um, so it would be the Mansfield School District out of uh just out of Dallas, Texas, and the Elma School District. Leading this vision for the National Superintendent's Association on building a career and college readiness vision. So um, that does come with a stipend, which that stipend is gonna be. Put back to the um Learning Twenty Twenty Five membership, because we don't have a redefining ready membership. So um, so it's kind of like, we already don't pay for redefining ready and we get our costs offset. Which is now we're gonna go back to the Learning Twenty Twenty Five to offset those costs. So um. Um, so we are seeking approval to attend at the Cedar Rapids, Iowa, as actually as the new national leaders of the redefining ready.
I'm in for the approval to attend redefining ready spring conference, Cedar Rapids, April twenty second to the twenty fifth. For both uh Superintendent Nesmith and High School Principal.
Second.
There's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in paper? Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, approval to attend Learning Twenty Twenty Five Conference, Washington, D.C., June twenty fifth to twenty eighth. Again, Superintendent Nesmith and High School, or Elementary Principal, Mr. Keating.
Yeah, this is just the uh, the the summit of practically all the cohorts. So redefining ready is our cohort. Um, there's other cohorts across the nation, um, early learning, um, technology innovation. Um, this is the summit where all of the groups come together and kind of, you know, share on how. One district's work in early learning is driving another district's work in technology integration and our work in career and cultural readiness is going. And.
Kind of motion?
Yeah, I'll move for the approval to attend Learning Twenty Twenty Five Conference, Washington, D.C., June twenty fifth through the twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. For Superintendent Nesmith and Elementary Principal Mark Keating.
I'll second. It's been a motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
It kind of cuts into some of our good news, but.
Yeah.
There's kind of a teaser from the good news section of our report.
So you have the floor. It's enrollment time.
Enrollment. Um, we are continuing to grow. Um, I I think that has been a constant theme and message throughout the school district. Um, we are actually down a little bit from where we were in December by about six students. Um, but it's still not accounting for the substantive growth that we have already experienced um throughout this year. So. Our uh. Our uh, the Sky Cat Virtual Academy is up to about sixty two point two students on average. Our January enrollment is at seventy two point six. So our online school continues to grow. And the leadership of Ms. Felden. Um, our in-person student enrollment is um. Um, is uh, is down about four. And then our um. A L E programming is up, is running on an average of about eleven point six two with our open doors program running about fifty two solid. And you had almost no change in your open doors enrollment. I think you have quite the list, though. Wendy, maybe you can elaborate on that. I think you're capped, right?
Oh, yes.
Yes.
We are doing uh Wednesdays after hours for those who want to focus solely on G E D. So we do have room still to grow in that capacity.
Which I think that would explain why you're seeing that F T E um is holding a consistent number of open doors now. It's because we have a waiting list and we're at capacity. We really can't take any more students within our open doors program.
In a little bit, we were down in January. We already picked up this week.
Oh.
They weren't there on day one of county in January, but they were involved.
So scratch.
Our, um, I mean, Eric says that, but um. Um, here I was gonna look at it. It's like in the month of September, we increased by about twenty F T E. Um, so from September's count to October's count. So we've had an interesting trend of enrollment increasing mid-year. Um, like something I've never seen.
Have you?
Like I say, already this week, we just like. Quite a few. At some moment, there was what, not just in the virtual, there was a known student in middle school, elementary and high school.
You traditionally see um. Like your number starts off in September and comes down. Honestly, I mean, we would continue to grow exponentially if Wendy didn't have to put like a.
We don't have any for any of our students.
Gracie, all right, just say, I mean, like, they really, they, they seem not even want to be there. We want to support them. So we'll get there.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. But your report.
That I have at the end of the month is that accidentally went on.
That's all right. That's all right.
A teaser. I was so excited.
It's not on the paper. It's not on the paper copy. I should have followed it. It's on the electronic copy that I. Paid attention. Sorry about that. Oh, no. Yes, it is. I lied. I don't have my readers on either. No, it's not. You did just fine. Um, okay, so um. Superintendent report.
Um, well, we are kind of letting some users in, but. December, the Elma School District was um requested to re-nominate through Washington State and Kirk Connect Washington as um. Other group that's leading a lot of our career, want on career. And youth apprenticeship initiatives in Washington State to represent Washington State. Washington State was identified as a national leader. As far as growing youth apprenticeship work. And Elma School District, it was identified as one of the state leaders within that work on who's really. Reaching students and communities in rural districts. So we were selected to be a um, a study district. As a part of a national study tied back to the Harvard Department of Education, Jobs for the Future, Advanced Ed, biggest leaders. And oh, and New America, which New America is the advisement group under the United States Department of Labor. So um, all the groups that kind of do this thought work um are doing a group study. And we're gonna be studied. I haven't been studied before, Christie. Have you been studied? And then with that, we were also asked to step in as the leaders for the National Superintendent's Association. So. Kind of being a little bit redundant, but I think it's a big thing to celebrate that Elma School District has been asked to be, set the model for the new research of the Harvard Department of Education. And also lead the new vision for the National Superintendent's Association on how to build a career and college readiness environment. So I I feel really confident in saying that we have a national leading program. Christie, would you agree? I think that goes hand in hand with having the president, uh, National President of Skills USA and.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes. Tomorrow, um. Um, because I am very bad at my job, I, uh, Crispy is gonna be presenting to. School counselors across the region on the work of Elma School District. And on her work. And uh, I was supposed to be presenting with her, but I abandoned her. So Crispy is going to be leading the presentation to counselors across the region uh over at the Skill Center.
But a lot of good came out of it, because Grace is joining me and it's gonna be even better.
It will be better. I was asked to keynote the um state C T Director's conference in October. And Christie was there and I asked Grace to open it and there was no coming back. Grace, I should have edged out more time for you and I should have shut my time down. So Grace does an incredible job. And it was probably a subpar keynote, but um Grace is going to come in and do that presentation. So. Um, I think the uh counselors across the nation, uh, the across the region are getting a much better deal. We, on the other hand, will be hosting E S D superintendents tomorrow at the middle school. So we'll be getting a learning walk tomorrow. The middle school will be getting a seven thirty in the morning. We'll be taking all the superintendents across the region. Through the middle school, looking at our implementations. Uh, one of the big things we're gonna be looking at is we have actually totally changed our sixth grade schedule. To a block schedule to match the um fifth grade schedule. And we're asking the uh superintendents to come in and look at this and really provide feedback. On how that sixth grade reconfiguration is improving student learning. Um, we found as a district, our largest drop was in sixth grade. And a lot of that was just because the shock of coming into sixth grade. And we felt that it really couldn't go much more than one more year. And so we did a whole new grade configuration. So the sixth grade day, you had a sixth grader, their day would match fifth grade. Um, so that way it would, it would make that that change, even though you're in a new building, the experience of your day is just like fifth grade. And we're gonna have superintendents and look and see how that implementation's gone. Um. Very short news. Um, I was terrible. I didn't have to ask questions yesterday or just provide answers. So I spent. This is terrible, especially after Bill gave a presentation on cell phones. Um, but I was getting updates on wrestling as we did interviews last night. And we just, our our wrestling program is just doing an absolutely incredible job, which would be unique, but I am the only thing keeping you to getting to basketball. And we're tonight, we play Monty and we had a huge windows there last week over Oakview. And I think if you can get down there in the next thirteen minutes, I think we're gonna see another incredible win over Monta Santo tonight. And I am for telling great news that are gonna be starting in thirteen minutes that I am stopping all of us.
Uh, okay, and Delaney is not here this evening, so we don't have a report from her.
She is experiencing her report firsthand.
Um, I, I think Wendy, was it you that gave the treats? You brought them in. Thank you. Thank you so much. And we all appreciate you.
I will say, I forgot to include that. This is Board Appreciation Month, but our appreciation is actually scheduled for. Our next board meeting, because we're placing a new board member this board meeting. So please don't skip.
Okay, well, thank you, everyone. Um, have a wonderful evening. Go Eagles and. Let me do your job.
I move that we adjourn the meeting.
An emotion made. Oh, sorry. It's been a motion made and seconded. All in favor?
I.
The men apparently.